As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or in order of business at any time prior to the adjournment. If you come to our meetings often, you will note that we, there is an additional item on our agenda before the call to order. It's in bold, we want to get everyone's attention, and it is saying that if you want to address city council, you must fill out your card and get your card turned in to the city secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. If you are on the agenda, if you are a community support person and you are on the agenda, you do not have to fill this out, your information's already on the agenda. But if you are wanting to address us for citizens' comments, or if there's any other item that you have words of wisdom you would like to share with council, you need to get your form turned in prior to the meeting starting. So, it's 6:30, and I've called the meeting to order. This evening, we have a wonderful group of kids. They go to the Friendship Bible Baptist Church. They are the youth group, they participate in the Boost program, and they are going to lead us in both of the pledges tonight. If the kids would please step forward. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, these wonderful young people are going to lead us in the pledges.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the flag of the United States of America, I pledge allegiance to these Texas, one state under God, one indivisible, and one justiciable.
Great job, but clearly, we old people say the Texas pledge way too small, way too slow. Chaplain Linda Sparks, if you please step forward, if you would remain standing, we will now have our invocation. Chaplain Sparks?
Thank you. Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the beauty of it. Lord, the only thing we ask right now is for rain. We just ask you to send us some calm, soothing rain, Lord, that gradually soaks in, no floods, Lord, please, in Jesus' name. Lord, I lift up this council meeting, I lift up the City of Bastrop to you, Lord. I ask you to give wisdom to everyone and authority, and let there be peace in this city, Lord, and we just thank you for the beauty of the peace. And, Lord, I thank you for this city, I thank you for this state, I thank you for the county, and I thank you for this nation, in Jesus' name, amen.
You can be seated. Ms. Butler, if you'll please come forward. This is Mary Butler, and if you don't know her, you are missing out. You need to know Mary Butler. Okay, kids, you have way too much energy, so come join us, come up here and stand up here with us. So my proclamation tonight is about the programs that we have in Bastrop to feed kids during the summer, a lot of kids that get food during the school year. And I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that Mina Elementary, Emile Elementary, the Community of Hope, Bastrop Housing Authority, Trinity Zion are all places where kids can get food during the summer. Most of them run through August 10th, they serve breakfast and lunch, and it's a wonderful service. These kids get to also play and learn things and spend time together. Wait, 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 hold it, stop. Everybody, look at Colin. Scooch together. Come here, come here, come here. Scooch together. Here, we don't want you guys behind here, so you gotta go this way, okay? Scooch, 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 scooch. All right, you got him, Colin? Look at Colin. All right. Okay, now that we've got that important part of... Oh, wait a minute. Okay. So, great kids, want to support our youth, they're an important part of our community, and the kids are gonna get to see their picture. I have faith, Brandon, thanks. and I'm just so thrilled that the City of Bastrop's able to help in this way. Okay, we're gonna go on to the mayor's report, we're on Item 4A. Whereas summertime should be about children enjoying all that Texas has to offer, from The first thing I want to do before we go on to the rest of my report is thank all of farm-fresh foods to our state's natural beauty. the people who participated in our first annual volunteer fair. Whereas when summer is, when school is out for summer, kids who count on eating meals We had so many nonprofits, we had all of our boards and commissions represented, it at school might not otherwise have access to all the nutrition they need. And whereas one in four Texas children face food insecurity. was just a great evening. I've heard numbers upwards towards 150 people came and participated, it was just an excellent Whereas summer food service program, meal sites, also provide Texas children with a deal. place to spend some time with friends, learn, and thrive by promoting new meal sites through A couple of people have asked me, are we gonna do it again next year? Absolutely, we will do it again next year, it will be a part of how we form our boards local partnerships and support from volunteers, and by helping to increase access to summer and commissions and make sure that they're a reflection of our community. meals programs locations throughout the community outreach program. I also want to call out two people, Sergio Pracato, am I saying that right? The City of Bastrop is committed to making sure no child goes hungry this summer. Sergio Pracato and David Unick, they went to the Federal Correctional Institute and Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize did mock interviews. There are inmates that are getting ready to go and be back in the world, and it's intimidating the City of Bastrop as a healthy summer meals-for-kids community, and call upon all citizens to interview if you've been in that environment. and partner organizations to celebrate this effort. And those two gentlemen went and did mock interviews, and the backup that I read said Let's give these kids a round of applause. that the inmates were able to do 363 interviews. So that was above and beyond, and I just really appreciate those employees participating in that. So if you go to the next page, you'll see what I've been up to. Between June 29th and July 12th, which feels like a couple of years ago, I, we had the Patriotic Festival, and you can see that we had just a ton of fun. The bottom-left picture are the folks that sang the Star Spangled Banner for us, HEB Buddy was out there, the Pet and Pal Parade was a huge hit. Our good friend Sarah O'Brien is out of town, but right there in the middle underneath where it says Pet and Pal, those are her dogs, Betsy and Boomer, so they're here with us tonight even though Sarah's not. The picture above that is me in the middle judging the Pet and Pal Parade, and I have to be honest, it's one of the most stressful things I do all year, but I was happy to participate in that. I also participated in the YMCA Free Hugs Day, and it's a reminder that kindness goes a really long way. When you're wearing a shirt that says Free Hugs, and you walk up to a stranger and say, "Just want to give you a hug," and sometimes the response is, "I have needed this all day long." Just a smile and a kind word can help. The So My Style, if you are like me, and you don't exactly fit into every article of clothing that's hanging on a hanger, she has opened her business next to Lost Pines Cleaners and does alterations and has some clothes for sale, and that was her ribbon cutting, it was a lot of fun. I did the first Friday Art Walk, and I know that's a really goofy picture of me, but it was so much fun. They had uniforms, and you could do a man's uniform or a woman's uniform, and just, if you haven't been to the museum lately, I would encourage you to do that. Cherry Blossom Spa celebrated their eighth year in business, and we know that our economy and the whole economy of the United States is based on small businesses. And we have some council members that have their own small business, and it takes a tremendous amount of work, and unless you've ever run a small business, you don't really recognize just how much work and effort it takes. And I was very happy and honored to be a part of the eighth-year celebration. Eight years is a long time, and we wish them many, many more. And if you don't make it out to the Farm Street Opry, it's the first Thursday of every month, the music's great, and you ought to give it a try sometime. The next page, you'll see, last Friday, it was last Friday? Friday ago. I was in Navasota for the Small Cities Problem Solving Clinic, met a lot of great people and have already made some connections, I think they're gonna be able to help us in some things moving forward. We had our BEDC monthly meeting, I've already talked about the volunteer fair. I spoke at the Austin Chamber Regional Meeting last week. The FCI Quarterly Meeting was not on July 19th, that has been rescheduled. The warden is in the process of being reassigned, and his schedule got conflicted, and so it's been pushed out a little bit. We did breakfast bites last week, and some of you may have noticed, we got invaded by Corvettes last Friday. If you were like, "Where are all the Cor-" There was a big Corvette invasion, and we were glad to have them in town, and here it is, July 24th, and we're back at city council. The things that I have coming up, I'll be at the Best Breakfast on Friday. Council and P&amp;Z will be taking an infrastructure tour of Bastrop, some of those things that you drive by every day, but you don't really get out and look and see if the drainage culverts clog. So the civil engineer and me is thrilled, I'm not sure all of my other friends who will be on the tour are thrilled as I am, but we're gonna learn a lot that day. You can see there's several ribbon cuttings coming up, I'm going to speak to a leadership team at FCI, and just several things going on. I have rattled on long enough, and I think that's the end of my report, and so I will start with Councilmember Jones. Do you have anything to share with us tonight?
I wanted to speak up in support of our Sheriff's Department, it seems like that they've been kinda getting beat up a lot, and I think those guys do a great job, and I want them to know that I appreciate them.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been out of town for the last week and a half, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay, we're all jealous, but we will move along. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Mayor, may I ask you, how many events have you attended so far this year?
Mayor Protem Nelson, I'm sure you read your packet, so you know the answer is 203.
I just wanted to acknowledge that, thank you. My presentation's a little bit drier than yours, Madam Mayor. As the city's appointed on the Regional Clean Air Coalition, a couple of items of interest I'd like to share. One of them is the Saharan Dust Event that has occurred over the past couple or three weeks, has also brought in some particular matter that is extremely dangerous to vulnerable populations, and so if you would tell your loved ones to be careful when they're outside working, don't overextend themselves, because it can be very dangerous, especially in this heat. There's also an item that I think's gonna be of interest later on, but it's something that I wanted to apprise everyone of. Recently, the Environmental Protection Agency chose to designate areas in and around Beyer County and San Antonio as attainment zones, meaning their air meets the qualifications that the EPA set out for them. However, they designated Beyer County, which is San Antonio, as a non-attainment zone, and that's gonna create an additional burden on the residents, industry, and the governing bodies of Beyer County without some sort of associated benefit from an air quality perspective. The Texas Commission on Environmental Quality is appealing this decision because it is inconsistent with the governor's finding as well as their finding, and they did not want it to have detrimental effect on the economy of the San Antonio area. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because the proximity to us and the ongoing practice of the Environmental Protection Agency may put us in a bind because of our proximity to Austin, so I just want to make everybody aware of that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson, and we really appreciate you serving on that and bringing us back information, appreciate that very much. Councilmember Rogers?
I don't have anything today, sorry.
All right, Councilmember Peterson, I think you've got lots of things you want to do.
Well, I've got a couple, thanks, Mayor. First of all, I want to share the sentiment with Chaplain Sparks about maybe we can get a little bit of rain, but I did appreciate the cold front we got today. It dropped the temperature down just a little bit. It made it more livable around here. But with that, I'd like to introduce to everyone Mr. James Miller, President of Blue Flame Cruisers, and Peggy Mueller, Secretary of Blue Flame Cruisers. We'd like to present a trophy to the mayor, the council, and the City of Bastrop on behalf of the Bastrop Blue Flame Cruisers Car and Motorcycle Club. Mayor, if you would, please.
Thank you. Here, you have to talk into the mic so they can hear you.
I'm not good at that. We would just like to thank the city council, the mayor, especially, especially the city manager, and Visit Bastrop, Dale and his team. We had our 11th annual car show this year, and thanks to the City of Bastrop, we were able to really expand to networks and do radio stations in Waco and Austin, and it made such a big difference. The only hinder we had was threat of rain, and those know that we're car lovers, we love our cars, and it's really hard to put them in the rain, they're our babies. But we did have a good showing, we had over 79 participants, we had over 800 spectators that came through. So, thank you for our success, thank the citizen of Bastrop, because we had a lot of local people that came out this year. So we just want to give our appreciation to the City of Bastrop. And they also have t-shirts, did y'all get your t-shirts?
Yes, yes.
All right, wear them proudly.
Thank you, guys, very, very much, really appreciate it. All righty, we are moving on to page, I'm sorry, city manager, do you have anything to report? Okay. We are moving on to page two, I'm in Section 6, Staff and Board Reports, and Item 6A is receive monthly report from Visit Bastrop. Mr. Lockett?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'll tag on to the Blue Flame Cruisers, they did a great job this year and really created a very nice event. We've already been in contact and discussion with Peggy about trying to expand the event for the next year, we're very excited about what you've done in the community. And they were out at the Corvette Invasion out at Cota, Circuit of America's track, and I think our recorded heat that day, as we were doing our trade show booth handing out ice-cold water, was 114 on that parking lot, so it was hot. So, thank you.
That's hot even in Albuquerque. Mr. Lockett, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. Ms. Butler, they can go. If the kids want to go, yeah. Thank you all so much for coming, round of applause. I'm sorry, Mr. Lockett, I should've let him go ahead, I'm sorry for interrupting you, go ahead.
Fine. So, just a couple of points before we get started on the report. I'm reporting on behalf of the Board of Directors, they have just completed interviewing five candidates that were finalists for my replacement, and will be narrowing that down to two final candidates. It was the Executive Committee of the Board that conducted the five finalist interviews that just ended today, and they will be narrowing that down to two finalists that they'll bring back to Bastrop and have the full board do an interview for the final selection of the new president and CEO of the Visit Bastrop. We expect that to be completed in August, which is on time for our schedule, and will hopefully enable some input by my replacement into some of the preparation of the finances and some of the plan of work as we're moving forward. So that's really good news, that they've gotten to that point, and we're looking also for our brand work to also be completed in August, which will also help the process for establishing a destination branding campaign, which will be very exciting to roll out to the community at that point in time. So a lot of things are happening to move forward. We also have, based on the findings of the brand work that's been done by the Augustine Agency, we have a major photo shoot scheduled in either late August or the first of September that will help show the diversity of this destination, which was quite frankly lacking in our previous materials that we had to be able to represent the destination. So everything is in a focused and concentrated effort. So we'll go ahead and start with the, do I have control, or somebody else's got control? That's okay, I'll just do the next slide. So the first thing that's up is our financial report. At our workshop, we agreed that we would be presenting a financial report on a quarterly basis, so you'll have this report, and then the most important one will be the year-end that will be presented at September's meeting. So basically, very quickly, this is a fairly standard type of a financial report, and on the first page is a balance sheet summary. There, I think the most important elements is that on revenues, total revenues are consistent based on what was forecast from the city contract, and our expenses are at or below budget in almost all categories, with marketing and advertising and personnel costs being the big expenses to date. So it is really good news, from my perspective of managing a budget, that we've not exceeded our budget categories with a very small few exceptions, which we'll talk about in just a moment. The next page has our summary of expenses, and it's broken down in pie chart and graphs. It also shows our cash position, net assets to budget, our current liabilities and expenses versus budget. On the expenses versus budget, as you can see, the expenses in the orange category consistently are below the budget that we had set. On the next page is our balance sheet, which shows our operating cash currently at $720,000, current assets basically at $828,000, with our liabilities running at about $41,000, leaving a net asset for the organization of $828,000 approximately. The next page is just a balance sheet for balance sheet ratios. This is basically running way over safety in terms of operating position because we have such a good balance sheet that's available. And probably the most important page is the last page, which is our statement of activities. On the statement of activities, you can see our total revenue and then our expenses in each of our major categories, client development, dues subscriptions, information technology, local meetings and transportation, our marketing budget, office expense, operational costs, personnel, sponsorships to trade shows and conferences. And you will see that the percentage allocation, the two instances where we are over budget is in dues and subscriptions, that's a relatively small budget amount comparatively, and it was just a misforecast on the number of organizations and subscriptions that we needed as an organization, so we'll be able to better forecast that for the next budget. The other area that is over is in research, and there were a couple of research projects that we took on that we hadn't forecast. Other than that, all the other budget categories are at or under budget. So I'll stop now and stand for questions on the financial report.
Council, any questions for Mr. Lockett?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Ennis?
Mr. Lockett, this is not meant to be critical, I'm just interested, under meeting and convention marketing, it shows a zero expenditure.
Right, that's, that, the marketing that we've done for meetings and conventions is under advertising, and that was for a special project that we thought we were going to do for the convention center that has been postponed for this point in time. But there is about $30,000 that has been expended in convention and meeting advertising, listings and publications and different categories.
And is that incorporated into, say, the things that your marketing, convention marketing personnel was doing earlier?
The majority of the advertising and marketing for that is listing us in trade show, not trade show, but in trade publications, that we have the facility and we have the capacity for the convention center, and that's the majority of the $30,000 that has been spent in that.
Where would expenditures like traveling to TSA convention and trade shows?
That's under the trade shows and conferences category.
Okay, great, I just wanted to clarify, my man. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Anyone else, any questions? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lockett, what is involved in the research line item? What, could you?
Research, or?
You say, it says research under marketing?
Yes.
What is marketing and research? Could you?
So we have done some feasibility assessments for potential developments for the community, as well as some research about our product. So one of the research projects was for the potential of a boutique hotel to be developed in Bastrop to do a feasibility assessment, so that's basically what research is involved with.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Anyway, Councilmember Jones?
How many employees do y'all have?
We have a capability of five, we currently have three.
Three employees, and so is it fair to say that the wages paid to the employees are 40% of $761,917, based on your balance sheet, or is it 880? I don't know, I'm just wondering what that is.
Mr. Lockett, I think she's looking at the pie chart that you did, and your personnel is 40.8% of your expenses.
Right. That was, that is the current ratio that we have, and that is correct. On a national average, destination marketing organizations try to fit somewhere between 40 and 48% of the total budget for operations. It's the staff of the organization that is doing the work, and you have to be able to allocate that for, in your budgeting. The next major expenditure, or the primary expenditure, is in the marketing and advertising.
Is it, is the actual breakdown of cost, is that available to the council versus maybe charts or graphs or?
Breakdown of cost of what? I'm sorry. So it is broken down, total personnel costs to date are running at $319,000.
Councilmember Jones, there's some additional information in the packet that he hasn't shown on the...
She's looking at the deck.
No, I'm actually looking at the...
Okay. Do you have additional questions, Councilmember Jones? I think, and I don't know if you, but it's really, I think it's really hard to read the numbers, and that's why she's...
Yeah.
Councilmember Rogers?
Because I just had a question, and I know maybe going forward, advertising, you know, you show your budget on the advertising or how much you spent, I was wondering if maybe going forward, we can kind of break it down, advertising is such a broad, you know, spectrum, whether, you know, because I know we're advertising, you know, tourism, are we advertising events? I didn't know if we could break it down some so we can know where, you know, just so we don't have to know specifically which event or whichever, just, you know, kind of give us an idea of, we've spent this much on getting people into town, we've spent this much on getting people into the river, you know, just a little bit more broad things, so we can kind of see where advertising is going?
Absolutely.
Just that way, you know, just to...
We can prepare a breakout of any category, so we would be glad to prepare a breakout on the advertising.
Which is basic, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I think that the board is wanting to present a total amount of marketing that's been done for event marketing and total destination marketing, so you have a breakout of all the events that we've done and supported through the time that Visit Bastrop has been in operation.
That'd be wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Peterson, anybody, okay, everybody okay? All right, Mr. Lockett?
Thank you. We'll move into the President's Report. This is a revised report from what we presented at the workshop, and so you'll see a couple of changes. First of all, there's a glossary that explains some of the terminology. The comparatives of the different cities are listed, so you see that we're looking at the South Austin Airport region, Bryan College Station, Brenham, Seguin, City of Austin, Lano, San Antonio, Fredericksburg...
wondering if maybe going forward, we can kind of break it down. Advertising is such a broad, you know, spectrum, whether, you know, because I know we're advertising, you know, tourism, are we advertising events? I didn't know if we could break it down some so we can know where, you know, just so we don't have to know specifically which event or whichever, just, you know, kind of give us an idea of we've spent this much on getting people into town, we've spent this much on getting people into the river, you know, just a little bit more broad things so we can kind of see where advertising is going?
Absolutely.
Just that way, you know, just to.
We can prepare a breakout of any category, so we would be glad to prepare a breakout on the advertising.
Which is basic. That'd be great.
Yeah. And I think that the board is wanting to present a total amount of marketing that's been done for event marketing and total destination marketing. So, you have a breakout of all the events that we've done and supported through, through the time that Visit Bastrop has been in operation.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Peterson, anybody, anybody, okay. Everybody okay? All right. Mr. Lockett?
Thank you. We'll move into the President's Report. This is a revised report from what we presented at the workshop. And so, you'll see a couple of changes. First of all, there's a glossary that explains some of the terminology. The comparatives of the different cities are listed. So, you see that we're looking at the South Austin Airport region, Bryan College Station, Brenham, Seguin, City of Austin, Lano, San Antonio, Fredericksburg and San Marcos. At our last board meeting, which was held a week ago, the board is going to come back with recommendations on changing that comparative set, and we'll have that recommendation back to city council at the next.
Mr. Lockett, just for clarification, you have the comparatives all listed, but they are, you're not intending to imply that they are the list of one through nine because that's confidential. Is that correct?
They are not in order.
That was my, because someone will look at that and assume that they are in the same order. So, I'm just.
Number one is not South Austin Airport.
That's, just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
The takeaway on this report is we have been trending positive in occupancy. One area that's gotten me a little concerned is average daily rate is down a little bit. So, it, that's a factor on our tax collections. You need to have both occupancy and average daily rate up to achieve positive tax collections on that. However, I think that we have a good end of the year coming up based on some preliminary information that I've seen. So, I'm not too worried about that. The primary element is that occupancy has been increasing, and you can see that we had a 3.2% increase. There were some in the comparatives that had much worse increases, but there were some that had much better. So, again, it gives you, it gives us by knowing how to match up the comparatives of who's driving what. And in general, we had one of our major metropolitan markets that did very well in that report. Next page is our June website traffic, which basically is a simplified report that shows the growth of all sessions, which again is on a very nice trend ratio that we're very happy and pleased about it showing the impact of driving the awareness of the website and getting people to go to the website to check out our destination.
I think our Blue Flame Cruisers are just happy to see their cars up on, on the street.
Absolutely. That helps drive the awareness and the, and the interest of the destination. Organic sessions are very important to us, and it also shows a very good.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lockett. Mayor Protim, did you have a question?
Well, more of a comment and kind of, kind of an ongoing request. The background material that you've supplied, Mr. Lockett, is outstanding for, for those of us who'd like to get into research. But I'm just wondering how it applies to our overall agreement, how it applies to the scope of services that are in the agreement. I think going through some of these trends and, and metrics that we go through is, is all well and good for, for the board, but that's just not something that I, as a member of council, I'm interested in. I'm more interested in how these programs meet the scope of, of service that are outlined in the agreement. Can you kind of draw some correlation for that, in that for me?
Yes. It, it, basically, this entire report is, is predicated upon what is required in the scope of the contract and scope of the agreement. So, the basic, we would probably at our annual report want to match up every deliverable that we were asked for in the original contract and show what has been done. But, but the primary mission and objective of the organization is to market Bastrop as a visitor destination, and that how we do that is very critical component is website and using the website as a primary cornerstone of allowing people to become better exposed to what we have to offer. So, that's why we spend some time in. It also shows an indication of how well we're able to drive the public's attention through our marketing efforts to the website to use that as a tool and resource. But I would, I would suggest, and we'll take back to the board, that we present a matchup of the, of the deliverables. But this report was, for, for better or worse, was a, a requirement in our original agreement that was said that we would produce this type of a report. That can be changed for the next agreement to match up better to what the city council would like to see. This, and, and it is a point well taken. This is very much a resource tool for staff and our advertising agencies to be able to narrow and fine tune our marketing efforts and try to, try to make sure that our dollars are being spent in the best way possible.
Well, let me be clear. I'm, I'm certain proponent for, for the independent board action, and then they're driving this process. But from a citizen's representative, I think our attention is how the money's being spent. Is it being spent the way that we intended for it to be spent so that we can have this ongoing relationship with, with the full support of the public as well as full support of your board and, and the full council. So, I appreciate the explanation.
And the next slide shows our first caution in terms of some of the engagement metrics, and it's called a bounce rate. That's not where we'd like to see it. It is a little bit explainable in the fact that bounce means they came to our website, they went to one particular page, and then they left. Now, that is either an indication of they didn't like what they saw and they left the website completely, or they got all the information that they needed about that particular event, they didn't need any other additional information. So, we're diving into that. Our time of engagement is well in excess of the average. So, we're tending to believe that the engagement level is showing that they're finding what they need to find on the website, and then they're leaving to go off to a different location. So, we are watching that, and that's an indicator that we will be looking at. So, our June social media, 79,300, 79,000 engagements through Facebook. We had a impression ratio of Instagram that's increasing. We started with our emphasis on Facebook at, at the beginning, and we've been steadily increasing the activity on the Instagram profile to the point where we received 10,800 impressions for the month in the June Instagram social media stats. I think that the next page, yeah, go ahead. The next page shows a little bit more, Counselor, Mayor Protim Nelson, of what you were asking for. These are the things that we promoted in June, just in June, through our marketing channels. So, you can see that Ziploc's Pines, Copper Shot Distillery, Deep in the Heart Art Foundry, and the list goes on and on. Hero Water Sports, Simply Sweet Cupcakes, Bastrop River Company, The Chamber, Southside Barbecue, and others. And the different events, the Bastrop Juneteenth Celebration, the Blue Flame Cruiser Show, the Bastrop Patriotic Festival, Farm Street Opry, Live Music in Downtown Bastrop, the Homecoming Rodeo, and the Friday Art Work as well, Art Walk, as well as the Opera House Murder Mystery and Pine Street Market Days and the Red White You Dance. So, this was our focus in June, and we thought we'd give you a graphic representation of, of the effort that we were doing in that. So, June was a busy month in lots of really good events and activities and engagement. I wanted to focus just a moment on the Bastrop Patriotic Festival, and you can see that we did some billboard and gas top pump, pump, gas pump toppers, if I get my words correct, for that. And I think we also did something that was really extraordinary. One of our partners, marketing partners is Texas Monthly, and they get opportunities to do their boosted Facebook digital advertising campaign with a lot of different partners. Yeah, next slide, I'm sorry. This post with Texas Monthly, and you'll, you're seeing just the very first part of it on the static display, was the top performer of all the posts for the month for Texas Monthly. And basically, it generated 41,000 views through the Texas Monthly platform. And they wrote us and said, you guys knocked it out of the park. This was one of the, was the most viewed posts that we did for Texas Monthly. So, we thought that was pretty good. We also ran spots with Sun Radio that gave us some exposure in San Marcos, Gonzales, Dripping Springs, et cetera, and did digital ads as well. I want to congratulate The Chamber for stepping up their effort for this celebration. It gave us a lot more activities and events to be able to market and work with, and we're very excited about the opportunity for what is going to be planned for the future with the Bastrop Patriotic Festival. That's my report, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Lockett? Thank you very much, Mr. Lockett. We'll be moving on to Item 6B, receive presentation on the unaudited comprehensive monthly financial report for the period ending June 30th. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening. So, we are 75% through our budget year. Three more months left. It's hard to believe. So, performance at a glance, all of our major funds are positive, which is always nice to see. All of our economic indicators are positive except for statewide unemployment, but it's, it's just slightly down, not by much. In my noteworthy section, I did put a little, little information about some grants that we are being awarded and just a little information on that. On the budget summary of all funds on the revenue, there's only one fund that is not in the positive variance, and that's the impact fees. And that's really just a forecasting. Never really know, you know, when the impact fees are going to come in and to what extent. So, we will just keep an eye on that one. On the expense side of that, just the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District is in a warning, and that has a lot to do with just the legal and audit fees that we're encountering with that fund. On the general fund, net positive of over 8%, focusing on the revenues, sales tax revenue is almost 5% actual to forecast. Property tax revenue is 2% actual over forecast. Water Waste Water Fund revenues versus expenses, as a whole, the fund is 20% to the positive revenue, its actual to its forecast. And on the revenue side, it's just almost break even to forecast. Electric fund is an almost 9, you can't even read that, 14% net positive revenues and expenditures against the forecast. And on the revenue side, it's running almost 5.5% actual over forecast. Hotel occupancy tax, the fund as a whole is 18% to the net positive. On the revenue side, we are almost, again, break even actual to forecast. And I gave you a legal breakout. Do you have any questions for me on this report?
Ms. Waldron, before I open it for questions, I just want to comment that I really like looking at these. They're easy to see. It's easy to see where the problem is. It's a tremendous amount of information that I think you've done a great job of summarizing. So, I just want to thank you and your staff for that. Councilmember Ennis, did you have a question?
Mine is more of a comment. I'd like to commend the city manager and staff for the tremendous job of, of keeping line on expenses.
Thank you.
If, now, if you can just get into the minds of every possible developer and know when they're going to pay their impact fees.
Right. I'll work that out.
You guys do a great job, city manager and Ms. Waldron, the whole staff. Thank you very much. And you get to stay up here because we're moving on to the next item, which is receive presentation on the quarterly investment report for the period ending June 30th.
Yeah. So, in compliance with our investment policy, you get a quarterly investment report, and I try to summarize changes from last quarter to this quarter. Book value at the end of June 30th was $27 million. I have it broke down how we have the funds invested between demand deposit, money market accounts, pools, and CDs and securities. And of course, the report includes a lot of detail as well, but I won't go into all of that. Do you have any questions for me on that?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Our, our interest is significantly up this year from last year, continuing to, to gain there.
Didn't take much to be significantly, right? I mean, they've been, I mean, we all, right? Am I the only one that opens my savings account? I'm like, oh, I saved a whole quarter, you know?
I think we have been able to diversify a little bit, and so, we've been able to gain a little more than we were getting. So.
Appreciate the effort, but you know what I'm saying. It's that double edged sword, right?
It's like squeezing a turtleneck, but yeah.
You got, all you people out there, don't be laughing at me. You all think the same thing when you open. We want low interest rate on our loans and high interest rate on our savings, and the banks just don't cooperate. But I think that's for another meeting, Ms. Waldron, so you can keep going.
All right.
All right. Staff, last chance. Any, any further comments? Thank you. Keep up the great work. Really appreciate it. Okay. Our next item is presentation from organizations applying for fiscal year 2019 community support funding. I have a couple of things I'd like to say before we get started. One is John Painter, don't worry, we'll call you when we go in order. So, I know I got your comment card, but we'll take care of that in a minute. Counsel, I don't know about you, but when I read through all of the, and I believe it was over 200 pages for the 13 organizations, the organizations filled out exactly the pages we gave them, but I personally came away with knowing stuff I didn't need to know and not knowing some stuff that I would have liked to know. I, being the person that I am, have a typed summary of the things that I think we should possibly change in the application. I won't bore you with that tonight, but what I do want is to offer up to those of you who had to fill out our lovely six-page application. I personally think we ask you some of the same questions over and over, and I think they're hard to answer. And I can only speak for myself, but the things I'm interested in is, did we give you money last year? Did you use it the way you said you were going to use it? If you want more, what are you going to do with the more? The other thing that I personally find extremely important is to recognize where this money comes from. It is out of Bastrop power and light. That means 99% of the funds that are collected are paid for by the citizens of Bastrop. I don't want to see a hungry kid. I don't care where they live. I don't want to see a hungry kid. And, and I, so, let me get that out there. I don't want to see them abused. I don't want to see them hungry. I want to take care of all of them. But I want to be respectful of the fact that this money is coming from folks, and it, we need to make sure that we focus on the people who live inside the city limits of Bastrop. Unfortunately, we are in a position that there are plenty of hungry kids and people that need our help inside our city limits. So, for those of you that are writing, 40% of the population has an issue, and so, that means 40% of the, that's not going to cut it with me. I want to know how many people you are helping inside the city of Bastrop. Now, I don't get to vote, but I get to talk, and I would like very much for you to reach out to me and let me know what you think. I don't think it's a good use of your time to be filling out a six-page application. I would rather it be a shorter application and get to the heart of it. I'm not interested in a document that shows 20 years ago you were awarded a nonprofit tax exempt status. I'm more interested in your most recent 990. I, I think there's some things that we could change, and although I've never been an executive director for a nonprofit, I have served on some boards. So, I, if counsel is okay, I would like to encourage you guys, once we get through this process, and bless your hearts for filling all this out and providing all the information. But moving forward, I think when we've all just gone through these 200 pages, it's a good time to take a look at what we would want the application to be moving forward. Counsel, if I could hear some comments on whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. Councilmember Jones?
I think that the whole document should be one page, front and back, and if you have more to say, you have the opportunity to make an attachment to that. But other than that, I don't think we need anything more than that.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'm in complete agreement with knowing, I don't need to hear what the purpose of the organization is every year. And, and I would prefer to, if you're new to the program, state your purpose. But I would prefer the things that you mentioned, Mayor. What if, how'd you spend the money? What'd you get last year? How'd you spend the money? How many Bastrop citizens are affected by this money? Those kind of things, exactly the way you were.
Ms. Waldron shared with me that I know you guys are turning in quarterly reports, and so, we talked about maybe your third quarter report is one of the things that comes, comes with your application. Councilmember Ennis is making an excellent point. If it is the first time that you're ever receiving funds, you might have a slightly different application than somebody who's received funds before because then we would sort of know what's going on. I think that's a great point. Mayor Protim Nelson, any comments?
Well, I'm certain I'm in agreement. I, I think that the key issue there is how it benefits the citizens of Bastrop. And one of the questions that is in the application, but it kind of moves away from it, is how your organization benefits the community and the city of Bastrop's citizens, and be as specific as possible. And it goes into some of the extraneous information that, relative to the organization as opposed to its benefit. I think it's vitally important that we get input from the people who are requesting those funds of what they would like to see in the application so they can share their story with us so that we can share it with the citizens and make the appropriate decisions.
I appreciate that, and that's why I'm asking for y'all's input. I'm, I'm also real interested in how it's going to be spent. And quite frankly, you guys all put words in each of the boxes, but, and I don't want to look at anybody because they'll go, she was looking at me. Just because you put words in the box doesn't mean you answered the question. And, so, I feel like if we had fewer questions, it would be easy, we need to be able to say it's, it's a complete application, not just because somebody's typed something into everything, but that you've actually provided the information, we need to make a decision. Let me finish and I'll come back to you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Rogers, any comments?
One question I'd had, and this, like I said, this is my first time up here looking at them, and I'm not sure if some of the organizations get things from the county or other things, but I'd also like to know, you know, where they all get their funds, you know, if they're the only ones that do it in the city and all you depend on is just city money, that might make a difference to me. If you get it from five other pools, that might make a difference.
Excellent point. That's another one of those that, that's a question that's in there, but not everybody provided a complete and detailed answer. Councilmember Peterson, would you be up for a little more streamlined application?
You bet, Mayor. It's, we're all very bogged down in paperwork, as you said, we've got over two hundred pages to review. We could narrow that down tremendously. That'll, that'll make things work a lot better and a lot easier for us to understand.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. I also am cognizant of the fact that y'all's time is valuable, and I'd rather your time be spent helping the citizens of Bastrop than filling out and gathering that paperwork. Councilmember Jones, I promised I'd go back to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say again, I don't think we should have different applications for people that are new. I think that we should have the same application, just to keep it not, so that it's not confusing, and then maybe have an additional qualification of attaching a resume with mission statements. And, you know, I mean, there's, I think every organization has like a resume with a mission statement, et cetera, and that might be something that you attach, but we have the questions we want and put the burden on them in format and content and length as an attachment. And, I mean, that's just, you know, so everyone's got their sheet that sells their deal, but we have our questions answered, and I just think that makes it, just one form, very simple.
Well, I think that's a good point. If counsel is okay, I'm happy to work with some of the, you guys can email me, I'll pull that information together, and city manager, let's work together sometime after budget. Tracy, don't, don't shoot me. After budget, and then we'll.
No, ma'am, we're going to bring it back to you next meeting, and here's why. I'm going through the budget process, and I've already built next year's calendar while it's fresh on my mind, so we don't end up here again. So, we're going to put this on next council meeting, so we will be able to answer this. I'm going to ask Tracy's assistant to watch this presentation and capture all of your comments, and we will bring you a revised application at the next meeting based on your comments tonight, for y'all to further vet, and then we'll have it ready to go for next year.
Fantastic. Okay, Tracy, that, she said next meeting, not me. I was going to give you a little more time. So, but I do think in unity, we are, make it easy for the organizations and make it simpler, and I'm, I'm seeing some smiling and some nods out there. So, with that.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One of the requests of, of our applicants, it was, there were a couple of applications in there where there was, their board of directors or their staff had no participation from somebody from the city of Bastrop or Bastrop County. I would like to see possibly having more participation and input from our people who actually live in our city on these boards and commissions that are requesting money from, from the city. I know it's a, it's a small amount of money oftentimes, but it sure would be nice to have input from, from a local citizen.
What, can you clarify what you mean? I think I know what you mean, but I just want to be clear.
In reviewing the applications, there were, there were three organizations, I believe, it may have just been two, because there's a bunch of pages to read. There was no participation on the board of directors from a citizen who either lives in the city or within the county. They were, they, they lived and represented Travis County, Austin, San Marcos, but not Bastrop or the city of Bastrop.
What you're asking is that they pull somebody in from the community? If they want money from this community, they need to pull some sort of representation from the community, is that what you're saying?
It, it would be advantageous, I think, to me.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
I think, I think he's saying, because, and, and my math may not be perfect, because I jotted these down, but in the last fiscal year budget, our community support was a hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Of the thirteen applications that we got, the request is a hundred and fifty-three thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And I believe what Mayor Protem Nelson is saying, that, you know, obviously, we're going to have, we're not going to be able to be all things to all people, and when we start editing, he would be more swayed by a board that has representation from the city than a board that has no representation, is I believe your point, Mayor Protem Nelson.
You've succinctly crystallized my thought, Madam Mayor, thank you.
That's why I get the big bucks. Okay. Austin Habitat for Humanity, oh, and, based on all of that, you can tell we read your two hundred and twenty-five pages, feel free to remain within your three minutes. Austin Habitat for Humanity, you're up.
Good evening, I'm John Pointer, I'm the home repair project manager for Austin Habitat for Humanity. We do critical repair on homeowners' houses who could otherwise be financially or physically unable to carry them out themselves. We have completed three critical home repairs in the city limits of Bastrop thus far, and four additional ones in Bastrop County. We focus on life and safety issues, things that have left untreated would give rise to a hazard or cause the home to continue to deteriorate or code violations. These are things that we aim to alleviate the public resources, the healthcare system, by keeping people healthy and safe in their home, eliminating triggers for asthma, falls, and things like that. In addition to the funds that we get from Bastrop Power and Light and the city of Bastrop, we leverage additional funds to serve every client in Bastrop and Austin at the same level of fifteen thousand, and make referrals on almost every job. I was fortunate a few years ago to meet Combined Community Action here, and they're my local teammate. I refer to them on just about every job I work on out here. And additionally, Meals on Wheels of Central Texas can work anywhere in the state, and will leverage funds that we have also. So, yeah, we really appreciate the partnership, we could definitely do more with more funds, always. The need is definitely here in your city, as you know. So, even doing two a year, ten thousand would allow us to serve two homes at five and then fill in the remaining amount with funds that we can leverage. I think that's all I have.
Fantastic. So, as I remember your application, the ten thousand is for two homes, the homes are within the city limits, all the money would be spent inside the city?
Absolutely.
Questions? Councilmember Ennis?
Could you refresh for me how you identify your clients?
Yes. We don't have to do too much outreach, a lot of people know about us, but in Bastrop, we have, because we're a little bit new. We expanded our services out here not long after the complex fire. But, people reach out to us, we match them with funds that uniquely qualify to them, in this case, if they live in the city limits of Bastrop. They need to, it needs to be owner occupied home, no rentals, duplexes, and they need to be at a certain income level for sixty percent median family income for the area. The house needs to be insurable or insured, we can arrange to do that if it's not. They need to be current on their property taxes. So, it's, it is a very specific process.
What type of, average type of remodel or upgrade are you, are you talking about?
A lot of our clients are elderly or families, so we're doing accessibility modifications in most homes. Almost every house I've ever worked on has needed some kind of electrical work, where it's a panel upgrade or dedicated circuits for window units. But frequently, in a house, the last house we did on Water Street, not far from here, we pulled out a tub, I believe we put in a walk-in shower, did accessibility things, so detachable shower wands, grab bars, things that prevent people from getting injured and having to go to the hospital in the first place.
Great, thank you.
Great job, thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone here from Bastrop County Child Welfare Board?
It's me. I'm bringing up my phone because I have a timer here, so.
If you please say your name, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, Randy Fritz, I'm a member of the board. I'm here because the chairman could not be here. I'm on the board basically because a couple of years ago, I made what I thought was a relatively small contribution to the welfare board, but as it turns out, it was a pretty large one, and so they wanted me to join the board because they saw me as somebody who was willing to contribute financially. The reason I found out about the board was because of the annual fundraising solicitation that the board was doing at the time by sending out requests for donations through bank statements. Our situation is different now, our ability to raise private funds is pretty much dried up. The banks are no longer willing to do that, we've looked at utilities, the county tax office, and there are privacy rules that are basically preventing us from doing any of that. So, our ability to raise funds privately has really gone down. You've got a, a proposed budget in your packet, which I was looking at this weekend, and that's pretty much the way it's been, it's not the way it's going to be. We have been getting twenty-five hundred a year from the county, we've, I've asked that that be going up to thirty-five hundred, I think that'll probably happen. Last year, you did not fund the welfare board, but in previous years you did, and I believe the reason it wasn't funded last year was because nobody came for this presentation. But, in the past, you've supported the, the board. And my suggestion, we're making an outreach to the city of Smithville for the first time, and unfortunately, the elegant deadline passed before we were able to get going on that. So, we are requesting thirty-five hundred from the county, twenty-five hundred from you, twenty-five hundred from Smithville. I completely understand your desire to limit this to people in the county, I mean, in the city, but just to kind of describe to you what we do with the money, D F P S, when they take a child out of their situation and put them in foster care with kinship care, there are certain basic expenses that are not paid for, and especially when a child is put with a relative. It's not like when a child is removed from the home, you know, there's like moving day, that happens pretty quickly, and it's not a very pleasant situation. So, we help them with basic transitional costs, clothing, school supplies, that sort of thing. Also, Christmas gifts and birthday gifts if we have the money. But, the, the ability to do that is totally dependent on how much money we have available to us. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, I can't tell you how many of these kids are from the city of Bastrop, or from the city of Smithville, or the county as a whole, because that's obviously private information. So, we get aggregated data, so I can tell you that in two thousand seventeen, we helped out a hundred, there were a hundred and eighteen foster kids in Bastrop County, and we helped out seventy-two of them specifically. And in, two months ago, there were a hundred and thirty-one kids in foster care in the county, and we're on track to do roughly what we did last year. Plus, we distributed twenty-five hundred dollars worth of Christmas gifts last year. So, you're talking about, that's my cue, can I finish my thought? All right. So, you're basically talking about kids that are either potentially living in Bastrop now because that's where their kin are, or they were living in Bastrop and they were removed from Bastrop, and now they're living someplace else in the county. But, these are all kids that are still in the county, and our ability to help them is totally proportional to how much money we have. So, if we don't have enough money for Christmas presents, then they just don't get any. If we don't have enough money for birthday presents, they don't get any. And certainly, if we don't have enough money for transitional things, I mean, it's, we spend what we get. So, we used to be able to raise money, now we're pretty much relying on governmental entities, plus holdovers like me who remember when we used to write out checks and continue to do so. So, I hope that you will find it in your hearts. I am curious what your process is now. I've been through something similar to this many years ago, when I was county judge, and I know how we did it then, so I'm asking you, how do you do it now? You have all these requests, and now what?
So, we'll take all of the requests, and we'll share some input, it'll come back through the budget, and then counsel will make the final approval, so that it'll be a part of our budget book.
So, do you have a discussion at some point where you weigh the various pros and cons of the different requests?
They used to go in the back room and vote, and we don't, we're not doing that anymore. But, but we will have conversations, and we will give feedback to the city manager about how to divide it.
So, do we find out how we stand when the budget is finally adopted, or is there?
You'll see it in the budget package, because it'll, we'll have a hearing on the budget, so you'll know what the, what the decision was. Yes, sir. I had a couple of questions. My heart goes out to foster kids. So, the kids that you're helping are not like a part of CASA, they don't have a, because it looked like, as I read through your application, a lot of the requests are coming from their CPS person?
Right.
And, so.
Yeah, I saw that there's definitely some overlap in terms of this population. What we do is just basically provide cash to the foster care caseworkers for basic needs at the time of the transition. So, like, we'll get an email, for instance, that says a child's just been removed, six year old kid, first grader, needs a backpack, needs some school supplies, has no clothes, and then we, we email one another and basically just say, good to go, and usually we have a set amount that we provide for these different situations, so we're not having to reinvent the wheel every time. So, these are, these are not overlapping with these other services. I mean, CASA is part of the process of advocating for the child as they go through the legal system. We're just basically providing stuff to help them get going when they get removed from the, from the home. Otherwise, it's kind of on the foster, on the kin, on, on the relatives to pay for that themselves. And the same thing with Christmas presents, nobody says a foster kid has to, has to have a Christmas present. But, if we're not providing that, then lots of them won't get Christmas presents.
And, and I just wanted to clarify, as I look through, it looked like they're CPS workers, so you've explained that, you guys give cash to somebody who's identified the need, and then they go spend it at wherever. And then it looked like one of the expenditures was, it looked like a big shopping day at Walmart for Christmas presents was, I believe, I went, the way it was entered into the expenses.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, it's, we just go out and buy a bunch of stuff for all the kids and.
Okay. Any questions?
So, I personally would just like to recommend that, that we look at funding this, and I know that, I appreciate you, Randy, you did a really good job as county judge, you've got such a big heart, and, and I just know firsthand that what you do makes a huge difference. I have a lot of friends that are foster people, so.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Jones, but what we're, what we're really trying to do tonight is just hear all of the information, and then we'll have an opportunity to give feedback on the amount. We're not trying to settle on amounts or.
No, I understand. I'm just giving you my support, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions from counsel? Thank you, great job. Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry and Support Center.
I hate to give y'all another piece of paper, but I promise, you will appreciate it.
We're now at two hundred and thirty, Tresha.
I know, I know, and I'm going to, I'm going to chop down everything else, just because I listened. Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, city councilmembers, city staff. I, actually, what I handed the city secretary was a note from one of our program participants. I wanted to give y'all some good news for a change. I know a lot of times we come in here and say, oh, this is going on. So, it says, Dear Bastrop Food Pantry, we thank you for all your support. My favorite food is all of it. I have like nine boxes of mac and cheese. It means a lot to me because we barely have anything at our house, and you help us get food and snacks. So, that is a note from one of our participants, it's anonymous, from the Nibbles Program. Nibbles is nutrition and backpacks before littles exit school. So, I thought you guys would appreciate that note and hearing that from a student. I also wanted to share with you some information from Feeding America. Each year, they do a assessment of what the hunger looks like nationwide, and so you can go in on their website and look at your county specifically and kind of, kind of hone down on what it is in our area. And I looked at, twenty seventeen hasn't come out yet, but in twenty fifteen, thirteen point two percent of Bastrop County, and they only, sorry, they only do it by county, was food insecure. In twenty sixteen, we ranked twelve point six percent. So, we've improved. So, the work and the discussions and the investments and everything, it's, we're moving the needle in the right direction. I won't spend any time talking about our mission statement, you guys clearly know who we are and what we do. We're very grateful for our partnership with the city, we are very glad to be a partner in the city doing the work that we do. I will talk about some of the things that help us to do what we do. We were recognized in twenty seventeen by Central Texas Food Bank as their Partner of the Year for our innovation and our approach in the work. We really have a holistic approach. We want to move families away from an organization like ours, not because we don't want to serve them, but because we want to empower them to be able to be as self-sufficient as they possibly can. That doesn't mean that we don't, we only see them one time, we see them as much as we need to, to help them through their process. We've also expanded our collaboration work, we. We are partnering with Bastrop Hunger Free Communities Coalition. That coalition is currently doing work to do an assessment of where people are accessing food throughout the city and the county, so that the organizations that are doing the work can figure out how to cover the gaps. So it will mean that our city and our counties will become a more food-secure place. And that's, so that's the goal. That's what we're all striving for. We want to thank you guys for considering our 2019 proposal. That's really all that I have, and if you have any questions for me, I will take them.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Ennis?
Ms. Silva, can you...
You put that mic on fast.
You got it. Can you describe the NIBBLES Backpack Program for us and for the folks watching?
Sure. So NIBBLES is a partnership with the city of Bastrop, B-I-S-D, First Assembly Church and the Food Pantry. We responded to a request of the school district. There's like 68% of their kids that are food insecure. So what we do is we, we have no idea who these kids are. The school district tells us who they need, who needs to be served. We, in partnership with the city and the church, purchase the food, build the bags, get them to the campuses, and then they go out to those students each week on Fridays, so they go home with food, because they're not going to be at school to get their breakfast and their lunch. And so it helps to ensure that they are not hungry over the weekend, and it's pretty important, so.
Very laudable. Thank you.
And if it's in it, I apologize, but I couldn't find NIBBLES in your application. There were several programs listed, but I couldn't find NIBBLES, and don't point it out to me, I'll go back and re-read it.
Well, you know, Mayor Schroeder, I may have missed that, because I may have been talking about everything we did in 17, and I may have missed putting that in there. So if I did, and I'm kind of flipping through, I apologize.
But my understanding is that the request that we have is both for the Food Pantry, and I just wanted to be clear that it was specifically to...
I got it in the dollar amount, I know.
Mayor and council, that program did not, that request did not originate with Tricia. I put that in specifically as our volunteer opportunity. So not sure whether or not it was in her application, but if not, it will be in mine.
Well, it was in her $33,600.
I think I got it in the dollar amount.
Yeah, it was in the dollar. That's why I was looking for it in the application.
And just want to point out, too, the city staff have been huge volunteers of helping us build that, because we have the food covered, but the operation is volunteers and Food Pantry covering transportation, stuff like that, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Council, any other questions for Tricia?
Thank you, ma'am. Keep up the great work. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. Ms. Low.
Good evening. Mayor Schroeder, city council, city manager, thanks for having us here this evening so that we can present about our organizations. The Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team has two priorities. Our main priority is to assist families that are low-income, uninsured or underinsured, recover from disasters and weather events. And our second priority is to assist them with preparedness. So we were all prepared and ready to ramp up in the city of Bastrop, because we had been working part of last year within the county in the areas that were hit the hardest with the flooding and with previous fires. And we were ready to ramp up in the city last year, when Harvey decided to visit us and stay with us a little bit. And so our programming for the preparedness and the presentations and working with the neighborhoods got a little bit delayed, but we were able to do some work within those neighborhoods. There are a couple that, that we purposely wanted to visit with and have a conversation with about the things that they were dealing with in the times of flooding, and one of the neighborhoods was open and welcoming, and the other one is taking a little bit more time for us to get in with them, but we, I can report that we are working with them now. One of the things that we were able to do is, we were able to provide a survey for these neighborhoods in the city of Bastrop and asked a few questions. We made them very general, but they were about disaster recovery and what they had been affected by in the past. And one thing I want to report to you all is that the individuals that completed the report felt overwhelmingly secure with what the services were in the city of Bastrop and what the city was offering them, whether it was the city of Bastrop or the organizations and services that the city were working with them. And they also knew who we were, which is another good thing. At the end of our third quarter report this year, I wanted to kind of talk about how we determine who we're serving in the city of Bastrop. So we take in several ways for people to come and receive services from us. One, when a disaster hits, the county opens up a hotline, and so we receive plenty of phone calls throughout the county for individuals just reporting their damages and kind of getting us prepared for the reporting that the county has to do and what kind of volunteers we're going to have to have. After that, we receive a FEMA list for all the registrants throughout the county. So this time, our registrants was close to 800. What we had to do is, I met with the city planner office, and I got the city of Bastrop map, and we were able to look and identify those streets that are in the city of Bastrop, so we knew exactly who those individuals were, and we were able to reach out to them. I wanted to commend the city. The effect of Harvey was nothing like we had seen in the past. The individuals that we spoke with, it was mostly wind damage. That wasn't anything that the city could have done anything about. So I wanted to let you all know that, that the responses that we received this time around was more positive than what we had received in the past. But we were able to work with those families, and I can just tell you that we assisted 54 families with referrals and resources and rental assistance. Three received direct unmet needs assistance from us, and six families received additional referrals and funding through another partner. And we are so happy for the other community partners that we have here in the city of Bastrop, because if we can't fix something or we can't meet a need, we've also been able to, to refer them out. I also want to say thank you to the city manager, because our Unmet Needs Committee, we try to have each city within the county represented, so that they know who in their community or what the need is within their own city. And so I came to the city manager and asked her if she could refer somebody, and she did, and so we do have a city, Bastrop City resident that's on our Unmet Needs Committee. So now we have representatives from Smithville, Elgin, and Bastrop that sit on our Unmet Needs Committee. We are actively trying to seek those individuals out to work with us in those neighborhoods for leadership, and we just want to thank you for the opportunity and for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any comments, council?
One comment. In reading through your application, I really appreciate the collaborative approach that y'all take, and it's obviously y'all work hard to collaborate with other organizations, both private and public, so I really appreciate it. I'd like for all of our requesters to try to do the same level of collaboration that y'all do, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great job. Thank you. Okay, Bastrop County Women's Shelter, doing business as Family Crisis Center.
Good evening, Mayor Schroeder, city council members, city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of our funding request and for the many forms of support the city has provided our agency throughout the years in our efforts to address domestic violence, sexual assault, and stalking in this community. I'm Sherri Murphy. I'm the executive director of the center. To specifically address some of the questions that were brought up during your conversation prior to starting of these funding requests, our request is consistent with our past requests, which is just slightly more than what we have been receiving from the city. But we are, we are seeing an increase in demand for services, so we feel it's justified through that, by that. For example, our, one of the service areas that we've seen a significant increase is our demand for nights of shelter in our emergency shelter facility. Last year, we provided 6,200, 820 nights of shelter to individuals fleeing violence. That was an average of 19 individuals per night. So far, in the first eight months of this fiscal year, we've provided 5,462 nights, which is an average of 23 per night, which means we were at or near capacity more nights than not so far this year, and will very likely, very much surpass last year's total nights of shelter. Shelter, you know, is one thing we're thought of, we're thought of as an emergency shelter, being, that's our primary service. But I will tell you that only about a third of the clients that we serve utilize shelter services. Most of our services are non-residential services, services like the crisis intervention, the safety planning, counseling, assistance with filing assault charges, or filing for protective orders, or getting crime victim comp applications filled out, accompaniment to court, accompaniment for forensic medical exams. We have a tremendous partnership with Children's Advocacy Center with, providing a sane nurse within our own community to do those forensic medical exams on both child victims and adult victims. And we're seeing an increase there as well in the demand for those sane services, which is a sad, sad fact. You know, we also provide, we have our 21-unit transitional housing facility for transitional housing services. We share prevention messages through our prevention and education team throughout the school districts, and we have our offender accountability programs, our state-accredited batter's intervention, anger management, protective parenting. Across all programs and services, approximately 21% of clients served are city of Bastrop residents. Our primary location is here, so even though we do serve multiple counties, population-wise and presence-wise, we have a much stronger presence here in Bastrop. So looking back at last year's numbers, about, there were 336 individuals from the city of Bastrop that were served. Of those 61 did utilize shelter services, totaling 1,572 nights of shelter. In addition to the collaboration with Children's Advocacy Center, we're also working with all of the other organizations in collaborative efforts, and the Community Cares work and the Early Childhood Coalition. You know, this is not the work of one agency. It's a, it's a community coming together, and you see that with all of these organizations that are coming before you tonight. Regarding our budget, you know, about 55 to 60% of our funding comes from state and federal grants. And when you look at our funding request, and there is a page in there that represents our anticipated budget for next fiscal year, you will see where we're looking for about 54,000 from the various cities and counties that we provide services in. So that, you know, that, the city's portion is, is a fair amount compared to that part in the services that we provide, reflective of the numbers that I've shared with you. We use that funding to support staff salaries. That we're a service organization, that's the largest part of our budget, and we tend to, we will use that for staff salaries that aren't supported by other government grants, which specifically is our receptionists. They're the front line of clients walking in, and they're assessing their needs and determining what services they need and how, and get them to the right services. So they're that front line of providing those services. So it's a key piece of that, that the city is funding. So again, thank you, and especially on behalf of those individuals that reach out to the center. Thank you. This, this funding is, is important to us, and we appreciate that partnership and the partnership with the city. So I'd be glad to address any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Ennis?
I understand that not only the, in sheltering, you also provide counseling services for your clients, right?
Yes. That is a service that's provided both to residents and non-residents.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you very much. All right, Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center.
My name is Toni Reese. I'm with the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center.
Okay, you have to get closer to the mic or talk louder, one or the other.
Okay. I'm with the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. Thank you for having me. We are a faith-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. Our motto is "A safe place in a world of anxiety and confusion." At Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center, everything we offer is free of charge. This includes free pregnancy testing, limited non-medical ultrasounds, plus a variety of maternity clothing and children's clothing. We also provide formula diapers and other basic necessities, including large items such as cribs, car seats, swings, breast pumps, strollers, and much more. We also, also do homeless prevention with, by networking with several agencies. We have rescued 12 girls from sex trafficking. Our youngest client was 12 years old. Our oldest is 72, because we have grandparents that are raising their grandchildren. We have also taught abstinence-based programs to over 1,000 middle school and high school students. We have counseling and emotional support for those in need, and for moms during and after pregnancy, as well as their families. We offer a variety of classes, such as birthing classes, breastfeeding, parenting, grieving support, life skills, budgeting, and Bible study. These classes help families to get back on their feet. Our goal is to raise enough funds this year to break ground on our third location. This will not only include Pregnancy, Pregnancy Center, but also a home for women and their children, pregnant women and their children. We have had a few fundraisers, and we are hosting a golf tournament in October at the Cola Vista. We are currently in desperate need of a permanent location in Bastrop due to increase in rent and inadequate space. Again, thank you for having me. Do you have any questions, Toni?
Thank you. Any questions for the Pregnancy Center? You're, you've got a little over, well, I can look at it exactly. Last year, you got $6,483. You're asking for $20,000 this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the majority of that to go towards the fact that you're trying to build another building?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be a maternity home, where we could provide resources such as, we're going to try to give them life skills to get back on their feet and get out back into their own place.
Do you have a location for the home?
It is in Smithville. We do, we were donated two plots and donated some funds with it. So, yeah, we just need some more to start building.
Great. You did great. Don't be nervous. You did great. Okay, Boys and Girls Club.
My name is Leo Santana. I am the director of program services for the clubs out here in Bastrop County. I am a part of Boys and Girls Club of Austin, but I do serve my entire time out here in this county. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on our grant application. We really appreciate that. This is the first time that, since in the last three years that we've gotten it. I'm not absolutely sure if before I was here, whether or not Boys and Girls Club had gotten it or not, but we didn't show any record of that, of what we, we came. I, as well as everything that's happened in the last three years, is part of a management agreement from Boys and Girls Club of Austin to come and provide services and strengthen services, not only in Bastrop City, but also in Bastrop County. And so there's a little bit of a transition in structure changes and whatnot that happened over the last three years to kind of make what we're doing today. Okay? I say that because I'm going to go in just a little bit into what we do, just to make sure that everybody has a good understanding of who we are and what we do. Our mission is to inspire and enable all young people, especially those that need us most, to become productive, responsible, and caring citizens. What does that mean? That means that we do programs, field trips, activities, and events in three core areas: academic success, character and leadership, and healthy lifestyles. So these things are, you know, expected for these children to come to these events, be participating regularly at these programs, to be able to kind of bring, bring apart the positive relationships and/or bring out positive aspects of their character, so that they can become eventually productive citizens once they're 18. So that's the whole idea. From 6 to 18, that's what we do. This grant would continue our services at the Schuman Theater, which is now a teen center. The bulk of it, or all of it, would be used in staffing. We believe that, you know, the relationships we made with the children that we serve is really what encourages them to do better at academics, better at everything that we are trying to do with character and leadership, with health and life skills as well. with health and life skills as well. It's, it's a little bit of a cloudy answer that I'm gonna give you on how many we would affect. You know, every, every one of the, everyone of us are gonna get up here and say as much as possible, but that's clearly what we're gonna do. We served 20 to 25 teens last year, but we were mainly focused on the younger ages, simply because that was a greater need at that time. At this time, based on the decision to move forward, we're moving forward with the teen center, simply because we see a mass opportunity for us to have impact in that area. I hope to serve, or we hope to serve somewhere upwards of 60 teens and their families with this. These would be teens that have nowhere to go, that, to be honest with you, when we're leaving at the end of the night at the teen center, we're, you know, having to dodge them as they're just standing back behind the theater once the hours are out. You know, there's, our programming is centered mostly towards teens, and it's our focus. And we like to try to make sure that we have as much impact as possible. In looking around, we haven't seen a whole lot of services that are specifically for teens. A lot of events, a lot that we participate, a lot of those things. And we'd like to kind of focus our areas on our teens as well. The Schuman Theaters have been very gracious to continue to let us use that facility. We want to use it as big of a draw as possible on the teens that we serve. How will that affect them? In areas of academics, we can challenge them to be better and to stay in school. We can require for participation that they may turn in report cards or, report cards or progress reports over the week to ensure that they really are giving their best in academic, in their academics. Also supporting them, whether they need, you know, school supplies as most of the organizations here. We could also challenge them with career expectations, building a good job readiness program out of there, and, and, and making positive changes there. Through character and leadership, we could do community service projects. Programming focused on, you know, bettering themselves, building their stuff for seams, whether it be boys and girls, boys and girls separately, as well as, you know, programs that kind of help them to avoid risky behaviors. You know, at teens, you know, that's the time where they're gonna decide whether they're gonna use their powers for good or bad. And that's kind of our situation, is we want to make sure that they do that positively. Health and life skills are always a plus. They always like, you know, always need food and always need, need, you know, abilities to get healthy food, whether it's they make it or healthy choices. That's also a positive thing. The idea is for them to learn something about themselves, learn something about their peers, and learn something about authority so that they can make it through and know that they have support. This funding is absolutely vital. Our funding currently is largely based on individual donations. Since these last two or three years that we've kind of started, or that we, the management agreement has happened, a lot of it has just been fundraising and current donations and support from our, our Austin organization. And so we're looking to, to start diversifying our funding, and, you know, we wanted to make sure and apply here.
Can you tell me what is the budget that Boys and Girls Club designates for running this Bastrop Teen Center? What was the budget for last year?
The budget that was given was the Austin one. The budget for last year was $125,000, but that was for full services every single day, picking up children after school, which is not something that we'll be doing. We'll be, it's, it's gonna be a reduced budget that we're trying to figure out. I will be leading it up with the help of a couple of staff. If I had to guess, it'd probably be much less, probably a third of the budget that we used last year, simply because we had a lot of man-hours put into, averaging about 45 of the younger children a day.
So is that around 40,000, 50,000?
You know, if I had to guess right now, I don't want to underquote it, but somewhere on about 40,000. It's probably about a third of, of, of what would be 125,000 that we use to serve this club alone.
Okay, and that's what you're forecasting for next year? Because when I went through the application, I couldn't really pull out how much Boys and Girls Club spent last year running their center. Do you know that number?
It was, I believe we had a $60,000 deficit last year. That's why we switched from the younger kids to...
$60,000 deficit from the 120? Is that what you're saying? Or the 110?
We had, we, we spent, I believe, close to 170, 180, as we expected to, to, you know, typically at a club this size, we, we would spend about 100 to 125.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Santana. Any other questions, Counsel? Sorry, I jumped in there first.
Well, I just want to kind of follow up. It, it was hard for, for at least me to grasp how much, how many resources and how much resources we were given to the Bastrop Center. Everything was Austin-centric. And it would just, it'd be nice to have a breakdown to see what, what you had planned for Bastrop, Bastrop County, as opposed to just being an adjunct of, of the Austin program. I, I just, it was, it was hard for me to ascertain what we were doing for Bastrop and Bastrop citizens from the, from the package, although it's a great program and it's very result-oriented. So I appreciate that.
Yeah. That is, that is also one of the things that we did not want to make it seem like the only thing, and the only funding we had was coming from Bastrop. We had individual donations when it comes to fundraisers or whatnot, but I don't think we've had anything coming from the city just yet. And that's kind of why we're putting in our application. We've been largely supported by Austin, to be honest with you, especially last year when, when we didn't meet the needs as far as financially that we needed to, to be able to program.
Well, I have to speak up for our past Mayor Pro Tim Gary Schiff because I know that he has every year supported a concert for the Boys and Girls Club. So there's, I know you've gotten support from other folks within the city, and I appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Santana? Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I know we have, we have six left, but I've been asked, we're gonna take a super quick bio break. So it is 8:06, and we are in recess. Done. So let's, let's get gathered back up. Okay, it's 8:11, and we are back in session. The next organization to present is the Children's Advocacy Center.
Good evening. My name is April, and I am the current interim Executive Director for the CAC. We're just down the road on Chestnut in the Yellow House on the corner. We've been in existence and in Bastrop for 26 years now. We were one of 13 original CACs, of which there are now 77 across the state of Texas. CACs were created to form a coordinated response to child abuse across partner agencies and departments. Child abuse, apart from being unimaginable and horrific, can lead to lifelong health problems for kids if, if it goes untreated. Things like improper brain development, impaired cognitive and social emotional skills, lower language development, alcoholism, and drug abuse. The CDC estimates that the lifetime cost for each victim of child abuse who lives is around $210,000. These costs stem from healthcare, mental healthcare costs, legal fees, and then education costs as well. We know that we can mitigate these risks by stopping the abuse as early as possible and by getting these kids on the road to recovery and healing through counseling and therapy. We receive referrals locally from the City of Bastrop Police Department, the Bastrop County Sheriff's Office, and CPS. We are the first stop for kids who have been abused and their family members. We conduct forensic interviews, which are recorded and used as part of the investigative process. Each child and their family receives an advocate for the duration of their case, and each child is offered counseling and therapy, which is trauma-focused. And I will add that what I love about our center is we will give therapy to our kids for as long as it takes. We don't have, you know, here's your eight weeks, and then we send you on your way. We keep you at our center for years, if that's what it takes, to get you rehabilitated. In 2017, we conducted 376 forensic interviews, of which 110 were City of Bastrop residents. That equates to approximately 29% of our clientele being City of Bastrop residents, which is up from 24% in 2016. We are respectfully requesting $9,000 to help support our services to children in the city who have been victims of abuse.
Thank you very much. And last year, you received 5,558. And I, do you want to make a comment specific on the, what you would do with the increase?
Yes. So with the adoption of Senate Bill 1806 into the Texas Family Code, we are already on track for a record-breaking year. This bill now requires that there is an immediate CAC MDT response for CPS sexual abuse cases, which are made by a professional reporter, and also of children who has a sibling that dies. And so those, we are getting, we're inundated with interviews because CPS now has to call us and staff these cases right away. And this bill was, you know, created by DFPS in hopes that cases wouldn't fall through the cracks anymore. And because of it, we have seen a significant increase in our, in our need for services.
Okay, I'm not trying to be ugly, but I'm just trying to be clear. The Senate bill has changed the rules that you're operating by, and the state has changed what you have to do, but they didn't fund what you're having to do. Is that correct?
We have received an increase in our VOKA funding, which is our federal funding.
Do you know what percentage?
I don't.
Okay. All right. Well, that makes me feel a little bit better.
No, yes, ma'am. We, we've definitely been able to ask for more. We've added new staff members, and we've added some after-hour services to accommodate.
Okay. So they did make an attempt to increase your VOKA to cover the Senate bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions from Counsel? Counselmember Jones, were you?
I just, I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very mu... Oh, Mayor Pro Tim?
I'm gonna commend you on your application. Not only was it fact-filled, but it was fact-filled with information specific to Bastrop. And that, that really helped me to understand what, what y'all do here. So I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And understand about the additional mandates from the feds. So I commend you on being prepared for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job, April. Thank you. Okay, Combined Community Action.
Good evening. My name's Darlene Myers. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Combined Community Action. And I've been asked to come to make this presentation to y'all, so bear with me. You were, so you were asking about board members. If you'll look at our application, we do have Bastrop participants on our Board of Directors. We have Kristi from CASA, and then we have Mark Moit from, he's one of the county commissioners. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. This year, Combined Community Action is asking for a slight increase for the nutrition program, the Meals on Wheels, most people know it as, and then for our small crisis program. And that's for clients that kind of fall through the cracks and don't qualify for any of our other programs. I know you can read the application and stuff, but here's a couple of, few other facts that I'd like to share with you. And this is just for the City of Bastrop now, these numbers that I'm gonna give you. We served 12,504 meals this past program year to over 80 clients, and our clients are people 60 and over for the Meals on Wheels Nutrition Program. We're looking for additional match funding or to leverage because the cost of the meals have gone up. So we are funded approximately 65% of that, so we have to come up with the other 35. So we had to go around asking everyone to ask for additional assistance. Another thing, the meals are being served out here at the settlement, that the little retirement community out there. Okay? And then we also have volunteers that help us deliver the meals. Now, the additional 2,000 I said was for crisis, helps with like rent utilities for those that don't actually qualify for, or eligible for other ones. But like our weatherization program, we provided weatherization to five homes here in the City of Bastrop. And we normally average, well, because I see the bills come through, about $6,000 a house, a home. So that's about $30,000 that another program puts into the City of Bastrop. We have a case management for at-risk children who's currently working with 34 individuals here in the City of Bastrop. Also, we have a utility assistance program. And this past year, we paid in $34,174.62 to Bastrop Power and Light for 2017. We were assisting, we had, there's a program called Tenant-Based, Tenant Rental Assistance Program. And we had two families that we pay up to 24 months' rent, and they're qualified for this program. It's to get them transitioned out of poverty. They, we pay their rent and sometimes their utilities. And this is while they're going to school or working and going to school, but it transitions them and helps them to, out into the workforce. Another thing, we collaborate with Advocacy Outreach, Family Crisis Center, and for individuals and families with rapid rehousing and homeless prevention. That's through the Emergency Solutions Grant. I don't have an exact number with that. But we also, our Executive Director, Kelly Frankie, she works with the Bastrop County Community Cares Program and also the Bastrop Community Support Program. She's serving on this group and meeting quarterly, and they're planning, she's helping, assisting or help planning with the Social Service Expo that is planned in October. Other than that, I pointed out the board members. The only other thing I would like to share with you is that last week, we have to have an independent audit annually. And the one for 2017, they just finished last week. And we've got another clean audit again. So we're doing a great job. Sorry, I have to brag about it because we're a small group, but we work hard. And our administrative cost is only 5% of our annual budget. 95% of our funds go back into direct service. And that's it. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. So on your rental assistance program, where you're helping these people that are transitioning, that are working, and what, what kind of success? I mean, are you seeing that when you're at the end of that program that these people have really gotten a, you know, a hand up? And can you talk about that a little bit?
I can give you a couple of examples that I'm aware of. Now, I don't know if it's, you know, right here pertaining to the Bastrop City, but I know one time, or in the last year or two, we've had one go through EMT school and has become, got their certification. There was another one, she was doing cosmetology. Sometimes these are single parents. Sometimes they're, you know, two individuals, a married couple and small children. So it's not just, it's, they qualify for the program. They bring us the paperwork and all the information that we need, and we can get them out there. We, we've helped with tuition. We've helped them with car repairs. So there's money coming back in to the city. So just wanted to share those extra points with y'all. Anything else?
Good job, Ms. Meyer. And I know our CFO, we're always happy when we get clean audits. So congratulations. I know that means you just went through a stressful week. Thank you very much. Okay, CASA.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Glasser, and I'm the Executive Director for CASA, which stands for Quarter-appointed Special Advocates. Our mission is built on the foundation that we recruit members from the community to advocate for children who've been removed from their community due to child abuse and neglect. I'm happy to report that during the volunteer fair, we received 14 people who were interested in becoming CASA volunteers. And our recruiter and trainer has reached out to those 14 people, and they will engage in a training that will start either in August or October. So we are thrilled about that. And that, that lets us know that we have people in our community who care about their children, you know, the children that are in their community as well. Since our fiscal year started September 1st, we have advocated so far for 285 children. 201 of those children are from Bastrop County alone, and 66 of those children are from the City of Bastrop. And so we are looking at different ways that we can help support those children, and obviously having a volunteer there to work with them while they're going through the, their parents are going through that process is a huge deal. We have currently 66 active volunteers, and about 32 of those volunteers are from the City of Bastrop. And so we are, we're happy to report. When I took over this organization five years ago, I think we had about 32% volunteer coverage, meaning that about 32% of our cases were covered with volunteers. I'm happy to report right now we're at 82%, which is huge. Um, I'm happy to report right now we're at 82%, which is huge. Um, and so, but, you know, on the tail end of that, we're constantly receiving new cases. Um, yet between yesterday and today, I got seven new cases across my email with 14 kids that we will hear next, next week. And so, um, you know, our, as the city of Bastrop grows, as the county of Bastrop grows, there's, it's a great growth, but there's always some not-so-good growth, and so those are some of the things that we're seeing. But our volunteers are trained to go out and visit these children while they're in foster care, make sure that their needs are being met, advocate for them not only in the court system, but also in the educational, um, uh, field as well and, and in the medical field. Um, one of the things that we're proud to be able to say is that we do partner with the Child Advocacy Center. Most of those children that they, they have that come through their doors end up in our, you know, coming through our doors as well. And so we work with them to ensure that, you know, the therapy that those kids need, they're providing that. Um, and then family crisis too. We have, our families are then going to the Family Crisis Center to take parenting classes. And so, you know, there's a partnership there that, um, you know, that we're all serving the same kind of population of, of, uh, families there. The other thing that I wanted to talk a little bit about is that we do receive, um, funding from state, federal, other cities and counties. You know, not only Bastrop County is one of the counties that we serve, but we also serve Fayette and Lee Counties. And so, um, we do receive some funding from each one of those counties as well as from the cities, um, in those counties as well. Um, and we're seeing a slight increase in those communities as well, but the biggest increase here is in Bastrop. The population is bigger than those communities as well, but there is an increase that we're seeing. And I know that, um, April had talked about their increase. You know, when they have an increase, we're going to have an increase. And so we want to make sure that the funding that we receive from you all, um, and we ask for a little bit more than we have received in the past, that money will be focused on recruiting volunteers to serve the children. Um, that's our mission, and that's what we want to be able to do. In the past, before I hired a recruiter and trainer, we, um, one of my hats was recruiting and training, and I would maybe hold four trainings over the course of a year. It was not effective, um, and, and our board made a decision to reach out to a recruiter and, and trainer. And since then, we've, we've seen a huge increase. I mean, that, those percentages have increased, but we need to continue that. And so that money will be focused on recruiting community volunteers here and holding trainings, and she's holding trainings now, I think, once a month. And so there's different, different opportunities to have one at night or have one in the morning, during the day, whatever works for, for those, um, people who are interested in becoming volunteers. So we are asking for a little bit of an increase, um, and those monies will be spent that way to help focus on that. And hopefully we will have, as, as children come in through the foster care system and through CPS, we'll have volunteers there that will be ready to serve those children.
Ms. Glasser, what does the training, how many hours of training do your volunteers do?
So our volunteers go through a 30-hour training. I mean, this is not just a, you know, a five-hour training. We go through a 30-hour training. 15 of those hours are spent, um, in the classroom, as we say. Um, the remaining, they do homework, and they also come in and they observe court to make sure that this is really what they want to do. And so they have that opportunity to see other volunteers in action and see how that, that, um, training works, uh, what, what they will be, um, looking at whenever they become a CASA volunteer.
Thank you, Ms. Glasser. Councilmember Ennis?
So when a special advocate is appointed by the court, can you kind of walk, quickly walk us through how that, how that works?
Absolutely. So once, uh, the volunteers complete that 30-hour training, they're sworn in by, uh, the judge here. Usually it's Judge Eskey or Judge Dugan. Um, we, uh, have cases that are coming in, we have them sitting there. Um, we accept them as CASA because our board has made a, um, commitment to serve 100% of the children that come through our doors. If a volunteer's not serving them, my staff is serving them, which is not the model, but we want to make sure those children are served. We, um, have that volunteer come in and we say, okay, we have, here's two cases. You know, I want you to read through them. One of them may be sexual abuse, one of them may be neglect. They read through to see which one they're most comfortable with and to make sure that they don't have a relationship or know that family, because that could, you know, that could be in some, you know, it might not be well for them. Um, once they are assigned, our, their supervisor, their CASA supervisor goes out with them to visit the children where they're placed at, um, to help build that relationship between the, the placement and the children and the volunteer. Um, once they feel comfortable, then those volunteers go out and meet, we meet with those kids. They are asked to at least advocate 10 hours a month, um, meeting with the children in their placement, either going to visit those children at school, um, or at daycare, wherever they're placed. Um, and then at least four times a year, we go to court to report back. Those volunteers talk directly to the judge to say, this is how these children are doing. These are some things that we think that they need help with, um, and, uh, to kind of see what is in their best interest moving forward. Um, we stay with those children. If parents' rights are terminated, we might make that recommendation. And if they are, then we stay with them until they find an adoptive home.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Ms. Glasser. Appreciate it. Feed the Need.
Hello. Thank you, guys. My name is Jonah Byer, President of Feed the Need Missions, and, um, we have, uh, two locations here in Bastrop that we serve every week. Um, I think, uh, just a couple of quick points, and then you guys have obviously read, uh, through everything. So, uh, first, thank you guys so much for the funding in the past. Um, and, uh, we have basically committed to serving every week at these two sites, at all of our sites, but, um, the two sites. And we started the oldest site, the, the first site was here in Bastrop eight years ago. We've never missed a Monday night, and we've always been there with a free meal and listening ear and the message of Christ. So we, um, our commitment, our goal is that that will continue till Christ comes back. So, um, uh, we, uh, are there every week and, uh, to anybody, serving anybody and anybody. So questions or comments about the information in the packet or need to know any additional information?
Councilmember Jones?
How many churches work with you, or is it, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Um, roughly about a dozen churches in the immediate area that are pretty involved. Um, there's, it's hard to tell exactly how many completely, because we've got more and more volunteers coming out that are working to get their churches involved, so.
Any other questions, council? Good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Pastor Nava, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, City Council Members. Thank you. Uh, first I want to say, excuse my tired, I was out doing the job and I forgot about the meeting my wife called me, so I'm here. Just want to say the, by line of purpose of what we're looking for, the assistance from the city is to just help feed the hungry people and house the ones that are out in the street. We serve both the county and the city. We get a lot of families that are staying in the Tropicana or at the Budget Inn. They come, they get a hot meal from the soup kitchen. And some, when they run out of the finances because it costs so much to stay in the hotel, they end up needing help for shelter. And so we house them there at the same property where the soup kitchen is at for three months, and, uh, they stay there free of charge, and the meals are provided there for them as well. And then we also partner with the daycare, who helps them out with the daycare as well two to three days out of week if they're looking out, if they're, if the parents are looking for work. We partner with, uh, BISD as well, and we housed so far six homeless students, the, the male students that were 17 or 18 years old, and they were in Genesis. Uh, four of them graduated, two didn't, but they stay there until they graduate and then they move on. And so the housing, the emergency shelter, it's not just the ones that are in hotels. There's people that are just living within the city and the county that we assist. And there has been three families that were in the shelter, now rent a house in the community where Bob Bryan is at. Another family ran an apartment across the street from Buckey's, and the other family has rented another apartment within the city as well. And one at a trailer park right across the street from Dollar General as well, no 71. So we're helping the people in the city and also in the county, but at the same time, the people in the county are still getting that help, and they're moving to the city. And so it's not just, uh, the soup kitchen or the shelter. First and number one, we share the word of God and show them the love of God. That's number one. And we believe that that's what changes their life. And so if there's any questions, I'll answer them, uh, if I can.
Council, any questions for Pastor Nava? Councilmember Jones?
So you see that when you provide that housing, it is enough of, this is a question. So is that enough to help people get themselves together, enough to rent a house or rent an apartment? Is that what you feel like that, that service is mostly accomplishing with the housing?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, that's one of the things with the most thing that's helping them is that the men and women are staying together and not separating because of their misfortune. Instead of the woman going to the women's shelter or the man going to the man's shelter, we have seen families that have split up because they couldn't go through their hardship together. So going through it together, they help stay together, you know? And, but, yes, and see, and give them that three months where they could stay there free. There's no reason why an individual cannot get up on his feet in three months if he's not paying rent. And I'm just speaking the truth. And so give them a, a hand up instead of a handout, and they kind of see it there. And at the same token, they're not just staying, they're, they're being held accountable because there's zero tolerance for drugs or alcohol or any kind of domestic violence as well. So yes, I believe that it helps them out.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pastor Nava.
Thank you.
Literacy Volunteers.
I'm Dale Burke, the President of the Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, and, uh, also I wear a dual hat. I'm also the Adult Education Coordinator, uh, with Community Action. Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, been going for 28 years. Uh, the, my role as President has been the last two years. When I took over, there was a lot of challenges going on. There was no, the, uh, situation was, uh, where we didn't have a, any, a city grant because it was not, there was a lot of things that needed to be repaired. And so this last year, I really thank the city for, for giving us a grant, because Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, uh, is very much supportive of the community action, where we work, we are strategic partners with the Workforce Solutions, and we do GED classes and the ESL classes primarily. I've expanded the ESL classes, uh, to Red Rock and Lost Pines Elementary, and we did a Spanish GED classes last year. In doing that, it opens up more opportunities for us to do family literacy, where our objective is to have the parents with the children that are reading together. That has been a challenge. We have, our coordinators are working very closely. I very much appreciate, last week with the city volunteer thing, that was very helpful in getting more volunteers, uh, coming into our organization. Also, I would say this, with our coordinators are working very closely with the Bastrop Community Cares, and so we're putting a lot of time in there. Uh, but this last year, we also, and through Community Action, did integrated education and training for CNA class and also a, um, bookkeeping class. Uh, we're doing more of those things, and through that process, we have more, uh, we have people, our Literacy Volunteers of Bastrop, we have tutors in the classroom that are assisting, uh, students with math, uh, and English, especially writing. Uh, so that's another place where they do. But, uh, my heart is especially still wanting to do more with the liter, with the, um, ESL classes and do family literacy, and that's the part we're really, uh, just really working on to get going. And it's, it's been a, it's been a tough one, but I'm seeing it now begin to turn. And so that's, that's where I'm at. We're, most of our, the money that we're asking for goes to the, as far as a coordinator. Uh, we now, we had one coordinator. Unfortunately, she had a, a situation. Her daughter had a, a child that was born deaf and, uh, and mute. And so she's, so we have split it up. Now she shares time with another one. She does 10 hours, the other one does 10 hours a week, and so it's working out well. Uh, also, we have insurance and, and the other part. But, uh, that's where our funds go, and, uh, I'm very encouraged by where we're going. I thank you again for the city helping us in the past, and I encourage you to, to help us some more.
Council, any questions for Mr. Burke? Councilmember Ennis?
It's not a question, but Dale, thank you for all the things you do for the city of Bastrop.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Councilmember Jones?
Dale, you have done stuff for decades, and you're just an inspiration. He was also Man of the Year.
Yes, he was.
And you deserve that. You, I'm so happy to know you. Thank you very much.
It's been tough, but it's worth it. The city, I really appreciate the city, and I think there's so many deserving things here. But education, because where it ends up with our people is they get employment, and we get them out of the cycle of poverty. And, and then especially working with our parents along with the children. Uh, if we can do that, we're going to make a lot of difference in this community.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Okay, council, that is our 13 organizations, and, um, we'll have additional conversations and end up voting for this as a part of our budget conversation, and, um, you guys are doing amazing things and, uh, very inspirational and keep up all the good work. And I'm really glad to hear that the Volunteer Fair has benefited the organizations and appreciate you guys participating in that. Okay, we are at Citizen Comments, and I have one comment form from Debbie Moore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council and City Manager. I just wanted to let you know that there's a really good chance that starting Friday, we're going to see some of those big film trucks rolling into town. I was, thought I was really smart. I sent an email out before I came over here, and I forgot to attach the attachment. But anyway, she's filled out. I'm old and tired, but anyway, um, we're just waiting on her to cross, the, uh, the, the manager to cross a few more Ts and dot a few more Is, done her neighborhood notifications, reached out to the, uh, the neighborhoods. I've informed Chief Altgelt. He's the one that told me I forgot the, the attachments, and he really, I think he enjoyed that. But anyway, um, they're going to be here Friday and Monday and Tuesday, and it's called My Slice of Texas. Not going to be a big budget film, but folks are going to get some money, and we're going to have some more of the big white trucks coming to town. I wanted to let y'all know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. All right, we're moving on to the Consent Agenda. Council, does anybody have any items they want pulled from Consent Agenda? We only have the two. Does anyone in the audience want an item pulled from Consent? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll read the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from the July 10th, 2018 Meeting. Item 8B, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2018-13 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances by Amending Chapter 3, Title Building Regulations, Article 3.20, Signs to Establish Regulations for Electronic Message LED Signs Providing for an Effective Date, Providing for Severability, Providing for Proper Notice and Meeting. This concludes the Consent Agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Council, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're now moving on to page three, or as I like to refer to it, the last page. We are on Items for Consider, Individual Consideration. 9A, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2018-55 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Authorizing Proceeding with the Issuance of City of Bastrop, Texas, Certificates of Obligation, Directing Publication of Notice of Intention to Issue Certificates of Obligation, Other Related Manners, and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Waldron.
Good evening again. Just giving a little background, I know that at the last workshop, we talked about the debt capacity, and we had asked the financial advisor to calculate that available capacity without any change in the tax rate. That amount came back at, uh, four, four million, something.
Thank you very much. We appreciate them being here. Council, I want to draw to your attention that, as Ms. Waldron mentioned, there'll be some additional discussions about the projects, but I know we are all aware that you can box yourself into a corner if you issue too much specificity, because we are talking about projects that have not been designed yet, and we also have things that happened that we weren't counting on. So, we do have an obligation that we spend, that we are transparent about our intentions with the money, and I believe it's, they're all infrastructure-focused, and so, we want to be transparent about how we're gonna spend the money, but we don't want to put so much detail in it that we get ourselves in a position that we have money, but that particular street costs less, and now we have money that we can't spend. So, that will be addressed as part of our budget process. So, we will do that at that time, but what we need to do is be able to get these certificates underway, and that's the intent of the resolution tonight. I'm sure that the finance people have sat here this long, and they would love for me to come up with really good, hard finance questions, but I am out. So, someone else has to do that, if they have any questions for them. Is there anything you gentlemen would like to share with us? We're not raising the tax rate. It's a good thing to do. This is a wise investment. Yes?
Yes.
All right. Council, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve 9A.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson. I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Resolution R2018-56 passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We're on Item 9C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2018-57 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving an ESCRO Agreement with Seton Family of Hospitals for Public Improvements Associated with the Construction of a Healthcare Facility on 32 Acres Located at the Southeast Corner of State Highway 71 and Farm to Market Road 304 in the Amount of $896,317.40. Attached as Exhibit A, authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Council, I think several of you have noticed, and I think you, a couple of you made comments to me, that there was a blank page, and that was just one of those things that happens with page breaks. That's been corrected. And you also, Council, had, part of what we talked about at the last meeting was revising our sign-up sheet, and you all have a copy of that in front of you. So, if we could have a motion, we could have a conversation about this.
Move to approve the Resolution R2018-56.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Council, I have complete faith in you. I know you've looked at your packet. I went back through and compared all of my notes. I thought the city manager did an excellent job of summarizing the changes. And did anybody find anything that they wanted to change? Are you comfortable with the rules? I also want to tell you that I've reached out to the city secretary, and she's agreed. Several of you, I think all of you, have a copy of our charter that's in kind of a booklet form, and she's gonna get some of those made with our rules and procedures, so that we'll all have a copy of those. And then, those would also be available for our staff liaison, so that the boards and commissions are aware of the rules moving forward. I know that was, Councilmember Ennis, you had specifically asked about that last, last meeting. I wanted to make sure you knew we had addressed that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council, any other questions or concerns?
Just a comment. I really appreciate the work that the city attorney did on this, to streamline this process for us, so we can take care of the city's business.
I'll take credit for all sorts of things that I don't do. You're welcome.
I was referencing the legal process there.
All right. Any, if there's no other discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Resolution R2018-56 passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. We're on Item 9C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2018-57 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving an ESCRO Agreement with Seton Family of Hospitals for Public Improvements Associated with the Construction of a Healthcare Facility on 32 Acres Located at the Southeast Corner of State Highway 71 and Farm to Market Road 304 in the Amount of $896,317.40. Attached as Exhibit A, authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Palladie?
Good evening. This project was set up with the EDC and the Seton Family of Hospitals to establish that hospital, limited-use hospital, on that southeast corner of 304 and Highway 71. As part of that agreement, there was also an agreement put together for the, for the Seton contractors to install the public improvements that go with that. That includes a list station, it includes the sanitary sewer facilities, and it includes the potable water and all the components that make all that work together. So, that, that's part of that agreement. In, in doing that, we had to establish an ESCRO agreement in which gives us a surety that the, the Seton people will complete their project as are required to, that being in the amount of the $896,317.40. You gotta add that 40 cents. So, that agreement, once, once we get approval, allows City Manager Humble to go ahead and sign off on that agreement. And the next step is, that'll be taken to the ESCRO agent, which is Heritage Title Company of Austin. They will set up the account, which will establish the funds in the account, and make, that'll give our assurance that the contractor finishes the work they're required to do under that agreement. Any questions?
Then, it's my understanding that money was released back to them when they finished the improvements?
That is correct. Whatever's remaining, if there's, you know, what should be all of it, but.
Absolutely. So, Council, you can't spend it. We just hold it till they finish the infrastructure. Any questions? Happy to entertain a motion?
Move to approve R2018-57.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson.
I have a second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson? Yes.
Thank you, Council. Resolution Number R2018-57 passes unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It was a long night, but we're glad you're approved. We are moving on to Item 9D, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R2018-58 of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Confirming the Mayor's Appointment to Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation. So, I have made appointments, made them throughout the year, and I am appointing Councilmember Rogers to Place 2, to serve. There's a very good chance that this might be only a, a short time, but she'll serve in that capacity and get us through. And then, when we make appointments in October, we may be doing some new things with that after we get things all resolved with the PID. Any questions? Happy to entertain a motion?
I move to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, you can call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Do I vote for myself? Okay.
Yes. That was a yes for Councilmember Rogers. So, R2018-58 passes unanimously. We, it is 8:54, and we will be going into executive session to discuss two items, as shown on the agenda. 10A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to the status of updating the city's regulatory program, including public comment and citizen input into the new subdivision ordinance, pending revisions to zoning and sign codes and uniformity of the permitting process. And Item 10B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss purchase of four pieces of property in and around the downtown area. It is 8:54, and we are now in executive session. I've got a quorum. Can I go, Ellen?
Here she goes.
Okay.
This is so cool. Yeah.
Okay, it is 12:25, and we are back in regular session. There, we're on Item Number 11. There are going to be no actions taken as a result of executive session. We are now on Item 12, looking for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And I have a second. We are adjourned.